You ready?
Ready down here.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, March 24th, 2015 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. I will, before I ask for the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to just provide you a couple of tidbits of information tonight. We do have a couple of proclamations. It'll be a very short meeting, but in order to keep up with our transparency and our open communications with our citizens, tonight we're doing our first, and hopefully not our last, live streaming broadcast over the Internet. KLYC is doing that, and I think it can be accessed, well, the stream, since you're here, you won't see it, but it'll be on the Facebook, KLYC Radio's Facebook page. So besides our normal McMinnville community media, on Comcast and on Philes, we are being streamed live as we speak. So hopefully this will be a regular deal, so if you can't make it to meetings, or people want to watch meetings, they'll be able to go in and watch the meetings. The other thing is, you probably read the sign as you were coming in, being that we are being on television, we are streaming. What I'd ask you to do is I'd ask you to silence your cellphones and please avoid texting, receiving, or sending, or making any calls during the meeting if you need to do so. We ask you, please, go out in the lobby and do it out there for the respect of the others, please. So that being said, I'll go ahead and myself, I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilors. This is a time where we ask any citizens who would like to come speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight, now's the time to do so. If an item is on our agenda you came to speak about, we ask that you wait to that agenda item. There are some things, housekeeping-wise, that we cannot discuss during this open citizen session, and they're listed on the, they're listed on the agenda, right? A topic that is already on the agenda, again, we will wait, ask you to wait till that. If the city's in any matter of litigation, we cannot receive any public comments or testimonies on any city the matter, any matter the city's in litigation with. If it's a quasi-judicial land use matter, such as a land use public hearing, I mean, we can't take any testimony on that. Or a matter that's scheduled for a hearing at some future date, and if you do bring one of those up, we will let you know that it is subject to a public hearing at some future date. So, and of course, I can limit the, the comments and the length of the comments depending on the meeting and how many people we have who would like to comment. So at this time, is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask one more time, is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council on anything that's not on our agenda? Okay, hearing none, then what we will do is we have the minutes of the February 10th, 2015 dinner, and the February 10th, 2015 regular city council meetings. So councilors, you all had a chance to review your minutes. Hearing, do we have any modifications, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Hill, second by Counselor Menke. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, but it show the minutes of the February 10th, 2015 dinner, and the February 10th, 2015 regular city council meetings have been approved. We do have a couple of proclamations tonight, and we're going to do the first one, it's for Tree City USA. I know we don't have a representative of the forestry here tonight, but I will go ahead and so I'll just read the proclamation, and then we'll read the second one and move right into our new business, our presentation, since the second one has to do with our presentation tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to read the first proclamation, and this is for Arbor Week, which is April 5th through 11th, 2015. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 5th through 11th, 2015, as Arbor Week in the City of McMinnville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness thereof, I have heron to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 24th day of March, 2015. And you have any comments on Arbor Day or any, anything, Martha?
No, but I do have, they sent some items from Nebraska so that we could help commemorate. One is the flag that we'll fly again this year, marking our 18th year as a tree city. But I think probably one of the most coveted items anywhere in McMinnville, from what I understand, is the Tree City USA hat. So I know there's great competition.
There is.
It is with great solemnity that I give it to you to make this heavy decision on who from this great council will receive the Tree City hat this year.
You know, mine is almost shot from last year, but I can say, I can say one of our councilors who's newly retired, and his wife complains that he never gets out and works in the yard because she doesn't want him to burn his head, therefore I think it would be only appropriate if this go to Counselor Scott Hill.
And I want you to know, I will wear it every day from April 5th to the 11th while I'm out in the yard working, okay?
Okay, why don't I get you to come up and I'll do our other proclamation, then you can go right into your presentation. This is the B College Ready Month, which will be September 2015. Whereas a college degree or some form of post-secondary education or training is becoming the minimum credentials required to get many entry-level jobs, and whereas the state of Oregon has a goal that by 2025, 40% of adult Oregonians will have bachelor's degrees or higher, and another 40% will have associate degrees or other certificates, and whereas it is the state's best interest to help provide access to higher education for our children, and that encouraging parents to save their children's education promises that principle, and whereas outstanding student loan debt in the United States continues to rise and has reached levels that threaten the opportunities of many college graduates, and whereas in order for the college, to be college-ready today, schools and families need to be prepared for the financial realities of achieving a higher education, and whereas the state of Oregon offers the Oregon College Savings Plan to keep students out of debt by encouraging families to save rather than borrow for the majority of college expenses, and whereas the Oregon College Saving Plan is working with the McMinnville Public School District on a big college-ready program to help parents and families better understand the long-term benefits of higher education and how to reach their college planning goals, now therefore I, Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim September as B College Ready Month in the City of McMinnville. I urge all citizens to join the special observance with appropriate events and ceremonies. In witness thereof, I have heron to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 24th day of March, 2015. Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly appreciate it.
And you want to say, before you do your presentation, you want to go right into your presentation?
Well, you want me to do it from up here?
No, you can do it here.
Okay, but thank you very much, this is great. Well, it is great to be here tonight, and what a way to start. Really appreciate the proclamation. This is the second official city proclamation I've received, no, third, third in the state that has done this, as we're starting this new outreach program called B College Ready. So first of all, thanks for the invitation. What I thought for the, for my presentation, I would go over what the Oregon College Savings Plan is, how the 529 program works in general, and then go over and do a brief overview of the pilot project we're working on, the school district. As I go through both of those segments of my presentation, if any of the council members or the mayor has a question about whatever I'm saying, please don't hesitate to interrupt and ask. I just want to make sure people understand what we're doing, and with that, I'll get started. So I am the Outreach Director for the Oregon College Savings Plan. One of the first things I like to tell people is that I'm a state employee. One of the things I get a lot is, are you getting some kind of commission for every new account that's opened, or what's your financial interest in this? I have no financial interest other than hopefully raising awareness about the Oregon College Savings Plan and consider myself a big public service announcement. About 20 years ago, the federal government changed the federal revenue code to create 529 accounts, which basically let each state create a college savings program to allow citizens to put money away in a mutual fund type of account and have those earnings be tax-free. In Oregon, that program's called the Oregon College Savings Plan. Every state has their own 529 program. Some of the tax advantages you get from having a 529 account and putting money in it is that all the earnings are tax-free. In Oregon, you get an annual state income tax deduction of a little over $4,500 if you're a joint filer, or a little over $2,200 if you're a single filer. Some common questions I get about how the Oregon College Savings Plan works is if you put money into an account, you identify a grandchild or a child, they become 18-years-old and decide they're not going to seek a college degree or go to a trade school or any type of post-secondary education, what becomes of the money? First of all, the money is always in control of the account holder, not the beneficiary. So it's not that when they turn 18, they get the money and they can do what they want with it. You as the parent or the grandparent, or just as the account holder, decide how or when that money is spent. The alternatives you have is you can keep the money in there, so if that 18-year-old decides they want to travel around the country and see various things, and then decide to come back to go to school, you can keep it in there for them, and it'll be there waiting for them. You can change the beneficiary, which can be basically any first cousin or within that sort of lineage, so a brother, a sister, a first cousin, or another grandchild if you're a grandparent. You can even identify yourself as the beneficiary. A lot of people don't realize that as an adult, you can use 529 funds to go back to school. I know a lot of nurses and teachers have certifications they need for professional development to be used for that. The only real criteria for using 529 funds is that whatever the higher education institution you're using those funds for are eligible for federal financial aid. If you're not sure, you can go to the FAFSA website, which is the financial website for the federal government. You type in the school, and they'll let you know if they're eligible for federal financial aid, and pretty much all schools are eligible for federal financial aid. Another question I get is, well, can you only use the Oregon College Savings Plan funds for Oregon schools? No, you can use it for schools all across the country, you can even use it for schools abroad. Again, the only criteria is that they're eligible for federal financial aid. With what I'd like to do, let me just stop there and see if there's any questions as to just how the 529 program works, and specifically the Oregon College Savings Plan. Great, okay. So when I was hired as the Outreach Director about six or seven months ago, I was told, John, the average beneficiary age here in the state is about 10-years-old, and we're trying to lower that. So I have a nine-year-old and a six-year-old. My wife and I actually opened up accounts for each of my kids right after they were born, and we do an automatic $50 deduction from our checking account, and we just kind of have it on autopilot and don't think about it, which is great for us. Everyone can choose how they want to do it their own way. But when I was told that we were trying to lower the beneficiary age, and if it's 10-years-old, I realized we're kind of outliers on that bell-shaped curve. But most of the younger parents that we meet are through school, events, PTA meetings, so if we were going to try to lower the beneficiary age, my feeling was we should partner with the schools, and specifically elementary schools. So what we came up with is a new pilot program that we're launching in five school districts. The five school districts are the Hermiston School District in eastern Oregon, the Grants Pass School District in southern Oregon, on the north coast, the Seaside School District, in the Portland metropolitan area, the North Clackamas School District, and then here in the mid-valley, McMinnville School District. So we have a little cross-section of the state. We wanted some demographic diversity, some geographic diversity, urban schools, rural schools, suburban schools, so we have a good mixture. And the way the program's going to work is called B College Ready, and we have some sample materials that we'll actually be giving to every elementary school that participates in the program. It's a homework folder, you can actually see a little cap and gown on the back where that child can put the face of them, or whoever they feel like should be going to college, with a little cap and gown. There's a bookmark that they'll get. They'll also get posters for the library or the main office to help promote and educate people about the program. There will be information in the main office of how to open up a 529 account, just sort of a little brochure, a little, lets you know how to go online, what you need to do. It's really relatively simple, it doesn't take very long. In addition, the school put information on their website, either linking to our website or information about the Oregon College Savings Plan in general. We're going to have a newsletter that's either going to be monthly or quarterly, starting next month. Information from that newsletter will be shared with the school newsletter. During the school year, we'll actually be doing a B College Ready event, where we're partnering with the local PTA or PTO of that school. We'll have a PowerPoint presentation going through all the particulars of how the Oregon College Savings Plan works. We'll also let people know the different financial aid options that they can discover when they're looking at trying to plan for some type of post-secondary education. One of the things that we're most concerned about, and it was mentioned in the proclamation, student debt, financial debt in general is on the rise, the cost of college is on the rise. What we're trying to do, especially since the state is emphasizing with its 40-40-20 plan of people getting some type of post-secondary education, the emphasis, and rightfully so, is being academically ready and doing everything you need to do, whether it's AP classes, extracurricular activities, or whatever it takes to get to that higher education institution. But we would hate to see people, and I was talking to a gentleman earlier who has a daughter, who's done an excellent job of getting the good grades, doing everything she can do to get in the college she wants, and then you get the tuition bill, and you're like, wow, that is really expensive. So not only do we want students to be academically college-ready, but hopefully financially college-ready as well. So that's the emphasis of the program. We're going to do those PowerPoint presentations, try to pride as much information as we can. At the end of the presentation, we're going to give the school a certificate saying they're a 529 certified school, contribute one time $529 to that local school fund, and that PTA or PTO can talk to their principal and figure out what's the best way to use those funds. As a parent, in my PTA, we work really closely with the principal. Sometimes we need books for the library, sometimes we need art supplies. We're not going to be prescriptive. That school will know how best to use those funds. Again, that's a one-time contribution that we're doing during the pilot stage of this program, but we're looking to continue the program every year. Every time the school decides to participate in the program, they'll get those school materials, they'll still continue to get the newsletter, and hopefully put information on their website as well as in their office. If we're successful, and I think we will be, we're going to try to expand the program to other parts of the state and eventually go statewide. This has been one of those wonderful opportunities for me. Everywhere I have gone to share this information with, people have been very positive and receptive. I think it's a non-ideological, nonpartisan issue. Everyone understands the impact of student debt that's having in every family across the country, especially here in Oregon. So this is an awareness campaign. Even though it's a school program, we look at it as a community event, which is why this proclamation means so much. We're also partnering with the Chamber here in McMinnville, and it could be a sponsor of Lemonade Day, and we're excited to be partnering with, again, it's talking about planning ahead, saving, the importance of saving. Those messages are consistent with what we're trying to deliver with the B College Ready Program and the College Savings Plan in general. So with that, hopefully I haven't gone too over on my time allocation. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you. Being here in McMinnville, the reception has been terrific. I gave a similar presentation to the Yamhill County Commissioners yesterday, talked to the City of Lafayette. They're looking at doing something similar later in the year, so thank you for being the first one out, so to speak, on, as far as the municipality here in the school district. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions people have about the program.
Okay, let's start with you, Larry. Let's start with Kelly. Kelly, you had your end up?
I just was wondering if you might tell everyone what the, when these funds are available for use by a college student, what they can offset against those funds, I mean, what they can be spent for?
Yeah, it's a great question. Lots of times people wonder, well, what are eligible expenses? Tuition, room and board, books, anything that is required for going to that institution. So an example I like to give, I have a friend who just went to Willamette Law School, and they require having a computer, so that is a eligible expense. If you ever have any questions, there's a 1-800 number you can call, and everyone has sort of unusual anecdotes that they want to know if this counts or that counts. The one thing I will say, and if people aren't aware, we at, and you know, as I said, I'm a Treasury employee, we're not collecting receipts. We are not requiring everyone to turn in every expense receipt that they're making with those funds. It's on the honor code, basically. We're expecting everyone to use it, what it should be used for. The only caveat I'll say is that the Department of Revenue could audit you, and they could require receipts. So if you have a four-year-old and you take $10,000 out of their account, that might raise a red flag. But other than that, I think most people will hopefully be trusted to use it, what is it expected to be used for. Another common question, I know this isn't one you ask, but it's another one I get all the time, when they're 18 and they don't use it, and then you don't change the beneficiary, or you don't keep it in there, or you don't change it to yourself, what happens? Well, if you take out the money, there's a 10% penalty from the federal government, but it's only on the earnings, not on the principal. Remember that all the contributions are after-tax contributions, so you've already paid those taxes on it. So that's another thing to keep in mind. It's a question I get a lot.
Okay, Larry?
Yes. Who manages these funds during the time that they're being accumulated?
So it's a state program where we actually have a state Board of Directors that manages all the different portfolios. We actually have 15 portfolios with the Oregon College Savings Plan. The financial manager that we work with is Tia Kref. They've been doing financial services for about 90 years. I've heard about them first when I was with the American Heart Association. They managed our 403B account, which is the equivalent of a 401K. They've worked extensively with the healthcare sector and the education sector, but the Board's job is to make sure that all of the different portfolios that are under the Oregon College Savings Plans have a decent rate of return for the customer, and the customer is the citizen. There's also another program, if you work with a financial advisor, it has the same tax benefits as the Oregon College Savings Plan, but it's an MFS product, which is the other financial services person. So I know Edward Jones, I've seen in town, is a common financial advisor. You work with them, and if you like to do your financial planning with them, you can get that product. It's the same tax benefits as you would get with the Oregon College Savings Plan.
Kevin?
One of the questions that I have is, that you really want to get to the younger kids, but those younger families are often the ones that have crippling student loan debt and other, and other debt.
True.
So how do you, how do you work with them to get around that issue?
Well, I'm still trying to figure that out. I think that's, that's the trick, and I think, you know, I keep on hearing on the news how student debt, especially for millennials and younger people, is just really crippling their sort of, you know, financial planning, what they can spend and what they can't spend. So in some ways, they're receptive audience because they know the impact of having a student debt. And so what we're trying to do is if you can start saving early, you get a bigger bang from your buck, rather than waiting until they're in high school. And that's why we're targeting elementary schools, and everyone's going to have their own ability to put away money, as little or as much as they can, but we want them to know, this is a state benefit. So you're getting, if you're putting that money into a 529 account, the earnings are tax-free, you're getting a statewide tax income deduction. And we also, I was, I was mentioning this to someone earlier today, that you want to have compound interest work for you rather than against you. And it's much cheaper to save than to borrow. And there's actually a graph I've seen, and when I do a PowerPoint presentation, my boss actually got it from the New York Times, it shows if you had a goal of, let's say, $35,000 you want to get out of the account over 10 years. So this is a hypothetical, but you would put $200 a month into a mutual fund account and get 6% or 7% rate of return on that investment. So over 10 years, that would be $24,000, and you'd get $11,000 to hit your $35,000 target. So that's $200 a month. Now, if you reverse that, and you take a $35,000 loan, and the interest rate is 6% or 7%, you would be spending $400 a month over 10 years to pay off that student loan, and then you would add that interest on top of the $35,000 you took out. So when you see those two, these sort of bar graphs next to each other, to me, that just is a, like, and not being a financial person, and that is not my background, that just like, wow, that really makes sense to save rather than to borrow. And we try to deliver that to younger parents, older parents, it's never too early to save. And even if you don't choose a 529 account, if we can get you just thinking about saving, whatever it is, if you just want to use a will or a trust or whatever you're going to do, that to me, and I think for everyone in the program is the goal, to get people start thinking about it early and not waiting to the last minute where you get into the college you want, and then your only real option is a, is a loan, and that can be very devastating, as you've acknowledged with some of the stories we're hearing all across the state and the country, for that matter.
The same question I had is, do we have a sense for how much college is going to cost? I mean, I have a one-year-old, and I can't imagine at the rate it's going now, what it's going to cost him in 19 years from now, 18, 19 years?
Yeah, well, and that's really hard to predict that part, but what we can show is that it's been going up and up every year. I've been following the state legislature, and I've been hearing about tuition going up again for the university system here in Oregon, what it's going to be in 19 years. You know, I have a nine-year-old and a six-year-old, it's a little scary. The hope is, and the other thing I always want to say is that the 529 account or program will not solve all of your college expenses or post-secondary expenses, it's another tool in the toolbox. But that is part of, hopefully, a scholarship plan, grants, some loans, and other savings that you're doing, but hopefully it will help offset some of those costs and make it a little more affordable. But it's continually going up.
What's the going rate on it right now, the return rate?
It depends on which portfolio you choose. Again, there's 15 different ones. The most popular one, the one that my wife and I use, it's not only the most popular one here in Oregon, it's the most popular one in the country, it's the Age-Based Portfolio. And the way it works is, is that, so when my kids were born, from zero to four, it was a much more aggressive investment strategy, but as they get older, it becomes more and more conservative. So by the time they're 18, the idea is the money will be there. It's the same plan, idea for people who are retirees, they maybe have a little more aggressive investment strategies when they're in their 20s and 30s, but when they get to their 50s and 60s, it's a little less aggressive and a little more conservative. Same idea, and that seems to be the most popular one across the country and here in Oregon. But everyone's different. And you can take a, there might be some materials that Martha could have shared with you that had, there's a little survey you can take on our website that lets you know what your risk tolerance is, as far as choosing the right portfolio, what your mindset is, and we try to match you up with where you might feel like is the best fit, which ultimately your choice.
And do you guys have an office in Salem that you work out of?
Yeah. And I'm on the road a lot, so I actually feel like sometimes I work out of the car, but I do have, I do have a Salem one.
I actually have your job, I work for the Insurance Division.
Oh.
So I, I understand.
So we are best, we're based in Salem in Treasury, that's where we're housed.
Labor and Industry Building?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm on the third floor.
Oh, well, we're, we're on the first floor. So feel free to stop by.
I will. Thanks.
Either one of you ever in the office.
Yeah, forever in the office, same time.
Scott, any questions?
John, just thank you, because I, for us that are, have been a part or are a part of the financial industry, you know, that age-old problem of financial planning, you know, you always take a look at it too late, and then you really have to come up with a very aggressive plan. And so getting it out earlier and putting as much emphasis at those younger ages, I take my hat off. And I guess my question was one of those that Kevin asked, is the return on the funds, and I'm guessing many of them are mutual funds, and like you say, they're tiered for when you may be able to, when you plan on using the money, more aggressive when you're younger. But how do we, how do we compare to funds that are in other states? Because at one point, I know you can, you can get a 529 in other states.
You can.
And, and at one point, there were certain states, they'd rank them, and say, this is where you need to put your money because the return was back. How do we rank compared to other?
We're kind of in the middle of the pack, I think, and that's, we're sort of happy being there, because we're trying not to be too aggressive or too conservative, we're trying to find that sort of sweet spot. And again, there's different options within that portfolio range. So the, the lowest rate of return, but it's guaranteed, is a principal-based, where we guarantee at least a 1% rate of return, but it's tied to the federal interest rate. at least a 1% rate of return, but it's tied to the federal interest rate, which is very low right now. So, that rate of return is 1.2%, which is really, but we guarantee that it won't go below 1. And if the federal interest rates were to go up, that would go up as well. But that's a sort of guarantee. So, that's like at the low end. And then again, as you said, there's just, based on what your sort of situation is, you can choose a more aggressive strategy. But compared to other states, we're kind of in the middle. The other thing I'd like to say is that if you are from another state and had an account and moved here to Oregon, you can roll that in, and there's no penalty at all. It's very reciprocal. So, that's another thing to consider. You don't have to keep it in. You can, and I'm not saying you shouldn't move it, but you wouldn't necessarily get the state income tax deduction like you would here in Oregon if you were an Oregon resident.
Well, the, the last comment that I have is, you know, you talk about working with some of the investment houses, Edward D. Jones and those types of things. You might even take a look at some of the banks, because they have financial advisors, and they're always meeting with individuals. And to have some of the collateral that you have to get it out earlier with their clients may be another way of just spreading that message.
And one, and that is a really good point. And what I'd like to sort of ask, or, or just put out there for people to consider on TV and elsewhere, is that if people are interested in getting more involved and helping us spread the word about the event, like I said, we're, we're sponsoring Lemonade Day, going to various rotary clubs, and trying to talk to as many people as possible. If you're involved in an organization, I actually did a presentation with the McMinnville Lions Club earlier this year, I'm happy to come and do a PowerPoint presentation. The more we let people know about it as an option, and again, we just want people to start thinking about it. We're not saying you have to get a 529 account, but just letting people know that it's out there as a public benefit. If Martha can get you my contact information, maybe it'll, we'll share it also on, on the TV. But feel free to contact the State Treasury, ask for John Valley. Happy to give as much information to as many people as often as possible. So, it's a great point, and one I'd love to take others up on. There's an interest for me to be in various places around the community.
Thank you, John.
Alan, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones, John. And thank you for your presentation. It's very informative to know that. Mine has, would you clarify what the tax advantages of this are first?
Sure.
And then the other, the other one is, does it bump against the federal education credit that's available? Or is that, you have a?
Not sure on that. What I, what I do know is that all the earnings that you put in the 529 account are tax-free. And, and then, as long as you're withdrawing that and using it for a higher education purpose, you're not getting taxed on it at all. And then-
So, if it's your $50 a month, you say that you're putting in, that's-
All the earnings that you're getting from that $50.
Coming off.
Because you're already, it's an after-tax contribution. So, you're getting your paycheck, you've already paid the taxes on it through your paycheck, and then you're deciding you're going to put money into a 529 account? That, if it's just $50 and that earns money over 18 years, all those earnings are tax-free?
But the contribution is tax-deductible?
So, yeah, so, and then, so annually, you get an annual state income tax deduction. It adjusts annually. Right now, it's a little over $4,500 a year if you're a joint filer. And if you're a single filer, it's a little over $2,200. I think for the next tax year, so after April 15th, it's going up to $4,600, which makes it easier for me, just say $4,600, and then $2,300 for singles. So, those are the tax advantages.
Okay, good. Thank you for that clarification.
Mm-hmm.
And then, anything on the federal level?
Well, again, you're not paying the federal taxes on it either. So, there's no capital gains tax or anything like that.
Yeah. There's a, something in the federal, maybe Kelly, you know this, but something that you can deduct, dependents' education up to a certain number.
I'm not sure.
Other credits and things like that.
That's a federal education credit.
And those funds can't, I mean, they've got to be kept separate. You can't, funds that you're taking a credit on, you can't use for this other.
So, two separate things, yeah.
So, I would not, I'm not sure for, but if there are financial experts on the council, I will go to their expertise.
But there are credits that the federal government has for-
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, council, have anything else? If not, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I may be in touch with you in a couple of weeks, maybe I'll come and do something for one of our Qantas clubs.
Would love to do that.
And I'll get in touch with you. I have your contact information. So, do we have any other new, we don't have any other new business and no other questions for John, so thank you very much, John.
Great. Have a wonderful evening. Thanks again for the opportunity.
That takes us on, council, to our advice and information items tonight. Do we have any reports from any of the councilors on any of their committee or board meetings? They want to report on, Larry, do you have anything you want to report on?
Not, the Parkway Committee met this last week, and, and we had a, we had a good meeting, but nothing really new to, to report, other than they are working on a tour for us, still working on a tour for people who would like to go on a tour of the project, probably in May, when we get some further nice weather and further development. So, we'll, you'll be informed of that.
Okay. Okay. Kelly?
YCOM meeting was canceled this last week. However, we are meeting with the Board of Commissioners on the 14th of April, and then we'll have our budget session on the 16th of April.
Good. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for keeping us abreast on what's happening at YCOM. They're always an interesting subject. Kevin?
We've had an interesting, interesting couple of meetings with the COG. I don't know how many of you know, but the COG facilitates small business loans. They work through a nonprofit, a independent nonprofit that the COG actually set up called Cascade West Financial. And, and so, we go out and we work with, we recruit small businesses to apply for the loan, and we, we work with them all the way through the process. Sometimes it takes up to two years to get the loan done. The COG used to do all this in-house, and so, they've been working these loans since the mid-'80s, and they have a pretty big portfolio that had to be handed over to this Cascade West company, because the SBA, the federal SBA, said that it could no longer be done through a government entity, it has to be an independent nonprofit. And the relationship between the COG and Cascade West has been, has been fairly strong lately, but, or in the past, but lately, it's been a little rocky. Cascade West does the three COGs in Oregon. They service their small business loans. And we had a contract with them to, and there's a great deal of revenue that comes. We get a percentage of the interest that's, that comes from those, from those portfolios, and we get kind of like a commission from working those loans with the small businesses. And Cascade West canceled our contract and wanted to renegotiate it to get it in a line for time and with, with the other types of services that they're providing to the other COGs. And the new contract that they have presented to us is very unfair. They want us to sign a non-compete clause. They want us, they want to deduct the amount of money that we can get for servicing these, these loans, and they also put a time limit that they will only pay for loans with a 12-month look back. So, if it takes two years, we only get 12 months of those two years of service, of work. And they, it just, they just, all these ridiculous requests in this contract, and so, we've been going back and forth with them on it, and we have a meeting on Thursday for hopefully a final negotiation to, to get this settled. If they don't accept the, our, our terms, what we'd like to do with the contract, and we, we're looking at $100,000 in revenue loss to the COG, and they would have to lay people off. And it's, it's, it's pretty, they, it's pretty upsetting the way they've been treating us. So, we're working hard. I'm working with the mayor of Salem. She also sits on the Board of Directors with me to negotiate this. But this is, this is money for these small businesses, you know, it's, it's a real asset for our community. And the thing is, if the COG no longer services these, or works these, these loans, Cascade West doesn't have the staff to do it. So, they rely on us, but they're kind of got us over a barrel right now, so it's not, not good.
Are there any other alternatives, Kevin, that you might be able to go through that do those types of fundings or?
Yeah, there's an organization that, that services the COG actually on the, in Bend, and they're probably the closest, closest thing we have. And there's another one called Evergreen up in Washington, that if this, if Cascade West were to fall, SBA would then just commandeer the portfolio and hand it over to the next best thing, which would be Evergreen in, in, in Washington, which wouldn't be that local. It'd be a lot harder to work those loans. So, we, we really hope we can come to, to some sort of an agreement, but it's, it's, the Board of Directors has been kind of, kind of weird and very aggressive, and Jody Christensen sits on the board, and she's been a really strong advocate, fighting for, for the justice in this, and it's, she's been very frustrated with it as well. So, I'll, I'll report to you how that's going when I, next time we meet.
Great, Kevin. Scott?
No meetings, but what we're looking forward in April is on, the first of April will be the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee meeting. Community Choices is going to meet April 2nd, and then really our first TLT meeting on the 14th of April with the new, with the new forward thinking of, of where we're headed. So, later, later in April and May, we'll be able to report.
Good, thank you. Alan?
Well, I was hoping Remy would be here to give a background on what happened at the Airport Commission meeting. I don't know if she did that last meeting or not when I was absent.
Good.
You did?
Yeah, I was just sitting out in the audience.
Okay. Well, then.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Scott?
I really don't have anything, just a couple reminders that we have the Local Government Dinner coming up April 16th, and that'll be up at Ann Amy, hosted by the City of Lafayette. If you've never been to one of the local government dinners up there, it's a very nice place to have a dinner. And Hogginson's doing that, catering that dinner, so that'll be nice. Then there was the April 215 Senior Center Newsletter, a lot going on at the Senior Center. I think we have a great staff out there. So, before I adjourn the meeting, what I'd like to do is go around and say, Dennis, do you have anything? Phil?
Dennis suggested that I mention, like, the committee, you have options for programs that are profitable. We're actually meeting, we're actually meeting next month.
Good. It'll be a great, great program, great program.
That's all she had to say.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. Rose? Gee, we're going to have, just as, we're going to have to drink that much more wine